June 7th, meeting of the City Council, please rise for the plug.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Lincoln City, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Schar?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Krikovich?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
And Mr. Knippel, previously at Farm Staff, he'd be unavailable for this evening's meeting.
All righty. Correction, approval, the City Council asked, we have a motion approved.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Krikovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Correspondence, Rudy, let's start us off.
Nothing.
Nothing. Doug?
I had, was approached by a citizen about the cemetery and I talked to Steve about it. Other than that, kind of left it there.
Okay. Diane?
Yeah. I've had an email from someone who was concerned with what was happening with Doyle's dogs and it's not on the agenda tonight, right?
Correct.
So, do we know when that'll be coming back up?
Not yet.
I couldn't hear.
Not yet, we don't have a date.
Oh, okay, all right. And I also received a phone call from a resident with a concern about the cemetery. It's a different resident than Mr. Fritsch had. And so I've been doing some digging and checking into code on that, so.
Okay. Is that something I'll see at Parks next week? Is that something I'll see at the Parks Board next week, or is it just a concern?
I'm not planning on anything with the Parks Board.
Anything else? Mike?
Nothing, no calls, no emails.
No calls. And then I had, I did have an email and it went on record, a question about boat slips and we'll take that up with the Parks Department. Couple of calls on the Bartles Beach as well. And I did get a call from Relay for Life, just wanted to bring attention, is that Friday, the 10th, June 10th, 5:00 in town? Yep, just, yep, come on out and support. And then, I guess the last thing, Dunkelberger family, I want to congratulate them, Ben Dunkelberger, state champion triple jump. So, Lake Mills has another champion, so. That was it for me. Questions and public comment? Actually, Misty, can I get you to read that, please?
Questions and public comment. Public is encouraged to address the council this time regarding items on the agenda unless the item is the subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertained to a public hearing, you're asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided.
Please excuse the weird echo, there's some new equipment, but that was cool.
Sounded like Metallica.
Have anyone who wants to address? Seeing done, we'll close public comments. City manager's report? Steve?
I had my items in there. The first one was the general fund check register. The second one was the home participation consortium with Waukesha County. We didn't respond because we had anticipated being in it again. The safe drinking water loan program, we applied immediately for the lead service lateral program. They have made a lot of adjustments so that we can go back and do areas that we'd already done and provide forgivable loans to property owners for installing copper or replacing their existing lead lateral. And also, we can then apply it to programs like Main Street, South Main Street and Mulberry. Tomorrow, we'll be attending a webinar and we've, the engineers have already started the applications. The notice for the air pollution control permit for Fiber Dome was in there. And the time period for comments on that was coming up here, I think, June 16th. And then recent, there was a great memo from the league on recent legislation affecting municipalities. And I always think that's a good one to get out there and be able to see that they're, they've been very active on controlling this. Other than that, that's all I have.
Steve, can I ask one question about the lead laterals?
Yep.
You said that forgivable loans would only be available for stuff that has been previously changed and the homeowners actually did change their...
No, if they actually did change it, I don't think they're going to get anything. But if we go back and they, we've identified all the laterals that were led in all those projects that we've done in the last several years and if those people now agree to replace it, they can get a forgivable loan.
Okay, all right.
Same with future years for Mulberry and Main Street.
Okay, that's good news.
Yep. We did get the Sandbar Restaurant up and running. It did pass the inspection. It's about $4,800 to get all the work done. And so, it was open for Memorial Day weekend and we do have the lease on for tonight, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
And I read through the legislative updates, all of them, and it was, I guess with all the tavern operators license, I did notice April 1st, it started with a bartender is now, the one who will get cited for underage, for serving underage versus the establishment. So, just something good to know for all the 22 names we got down here.
You do get, I think Vicki was saying, you do get one forgiveness. So if you do it once, they let it go.
All right. Anything else for Steve?
That's in terms of consideration for renewals on licenses. That doesn't mean your citation will be forgiven.
Anything else? Seeing nothing else, we go to, we will, we have minutes from the senior advisory board from May 5th, the library board of April 18th this year, Parks Board of April 20th, Plan Commission of April 26th, and the Housing Authority of April 26th, and a joint Rock Lake Committee minutes of April 5th, all will go on record. Council business, miscellaneous license, liquor license, mobile liquor license. Can you get that one, get that one read? Actually, it's not really...
There's not a written, there's not a written motion, but I just want to point out that this one's separate from the consent agenda as it's a new, correct, a new owner and it'd be upon surrender of the other license. Right now, the anticipated date would fall right in line with the licensing period beginning July 1st.
So then, we're looking for a motion to grant the mobile liquor license, correct?
Yes.
You got a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Krikovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And the same with the mobile cigarette license, the promotion to grant tobacco license for mobile?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Krikovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And then, under the individuals, well, if someone has an objection, can we read this as a group?
Let me list them.
Yep.
Tavern operators license, applications for Kelsey Martin, Raina Severson, Patricia Cicero, Dustin Barden, Sylvia Bond, Melinda Baumgartner, Jennifer Gallagher, Robert Larson, Stacy Schaffnagle, Gregory Brown, Kelly Glinicki, Andrea McHenry, Amy Phillips, Leanna Spencer, Jaclyn Keizer, Catherine Walton, Adriana Urbhart, Catherine Urbas, Julianne Cromie and Matthew Gardner.
And a motion to grant tavern licenses to all the above?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Okay.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Krikovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And, public hearing, sidewalk cafe renewal? Steve, you want to start that one?
I'm going to turn it over to Misty.
Misty, all right.
This is the public hearing for the sidewalk cafe license renewal. Excuse me, the license actually falls in with the sidewalk cafe licenses. We've got one, which is Waterhouse Foods.
And this is the public hearing portion, so we're just asking for the public to comment.
All right. Did you have a question, Diane?
I was wondering, don't all the sidewalk cafe licenses can do it at the same time?
They do, we currently only have one that I'm aware of.
That's renewed.
All right. And public, do we have anyone who wants to speak on the cafe license? Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing. Consent agenda, we can just do this as a complete group, correct? Most of this is housekeeping, renewals, well operators license. Do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
And then, call the vote, please.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Krikovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Okay.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, all those are done. Mulberry Street Truck Route Discussion. There we go. Steve, you want to start that one?
No. There was a, Terry Relling came in and discussed the issue of the truck route at the last meeting and it was asked that it be put back on the agenda. We put it on for general discussion among the council members with no decision to be made. There was a memo from myself and the city attorney Vicki Schmidt and that's pretty much it, unless you want me to go into more detail on what I wrote or why.
Can you just clarify for the people listening that the trucks that are coming into town for specific places on Mulberry Street can still go to those businesses?
You want to do that?
Yeah, if somebody wants to make a delivery and they find themselves on Mulberry Street but their destination is also on Mulberry Street, they don't have any difficulty with going down Mulberry to make the delivery or for anywhere else in the city. But if you're in a truck and you're not making delivery in the route that you're going and you're not in a truck route, then you're supposed to get off and find a truck route. And the ordinance was changed, I don't have the exact date on here, no, I do, on September 2nd, 2014 was when the ordinance was changed. And we cleaned up some of it because some of our heavy truck traffic didn't make any sense at that time because it talked about Sandy Beach Road and that wasn't necessary because there again, if somebody was making a delivery specifically to a destination on Sandy Beach Road, we didn't have to call it out as a heavy truck route. And a couple other places like down where the old municipal building was, we took those out because that really wasn't the truck route. So the truck route as it exists now is on North Main Street from the city limits to South Main Street and then on South Main Street from the city limits to North Main Street, East Madison Street from Main Street to East Lake Street, East Lake Street from North Main Street to the city limits, CP Avenue from the city limits to East Lake Street, North CP Avenue for its entire length, Owen Street for its entire length, and Madison Street from the city limits to Main Street. That's the heavy traffic routes. And they are marked, it says that you're on a truck route and there's also signs for certain areas that say no trucks. And specifically on Mulberry Street, I believe there is a sign when you're coming in across the interstate, coming into the city, I do believe that there is a no trucks sign there that would indicate that if you're not delivering on that street, you should be going someplace else. And I think that was what prompted the original public comment because people were finding themselves in that situation and then they were trying to get turned around because they didn't belong there.
Are they posted, by the way, I know, I drive a box truck, it's a 22 footer, but is there a weight limit on it or does it just say no trucks?
No trucks. But it does have a weight classification in the ordinance, so.
Yeah, it's not really, some highways, you'll see that there are pretty extreme tight limits on weight. We didn't do that under the ordinance. Instead, we went a different route and I remember it's in here somewhere, heavy traffic defined, that's where it is. For the purpose of this chapter, heavy traffic means all vehicles not operating completely on pneumatic tires and all vehicles or combination of vehicles other than motor buses designed for use for transporting property of any nature and having gross weight of more than 6,000 pounds. That's how it's defined in the statute. I took the language right out of the state statutes on how we were defining our heavy traffic. There are other ways that could be done, but that was the way that it had been done, so I didn't really upset that when we amended it.
Any other questions, discussion, action?
Well, so if a truck that doesn't have a local delivery comes off of Highway A from the north and inadvertently misses his truck route, what's his recourse?
Generally, to get turned around and get back onto the truck route.
So go around the block?
They could do that, except, you know, when you're coming down Mulberry Street, when you're coming into town, there aren't a lot of options for going around the block. And I think that that's what Mr. Relling was bringing to the council's attention because they were trying to like pull into Prairie Street and back out and get back turned around. A fix that might be possible would be to ask the county because we don't have construction limits beyond a point on Mulberry Street as you're getting towards the interstate. If the county let us put a sign up that then maybe we could alert people that the truck route goes either to the left or the right on Highway V and then that might cut down on the traffic, but we can't put a sign there without the county's permission.
I guess, I don't want to penalize a truck driver for inadvertently missing a turn or not knowing where he's going. And, you know, I, personally, I don't see going down Mulberry as a big deal. I mean, it's part of the, it's part of the city, it's, you know, there's post office down there, there's businesses that, you know, rely on larger trucks. I mean, at the end, it's an industrial area, so I don't, I mean, it is what it is. It's not a, it's not a little quiet neighborhood street, it's a main route. And I, you know, if, looking back, I don't think I would have voted for that change now. And I understand what Mr. Relling was saying and I totally agree with him.
Yeah, the previous ordinance before it was amended, it did have listed Mulberry Street from the city limits to East Madison Street. So basically, from Highway V all the way down to the park, that used to be the truck route. But when the ordinance was amended in 2014, that was removed.
Yeah, and, I don't know, I would recommend that the council revisit that and maybe look at that again because, again, that is, that is one of our main routes. Goes right into Highway A.
I would like to suggest that Mr. Schar move to Mulberry Street because Mulberry Street is a very worn street, maybe after the reconstruction of the street, you want to look at that, but right now, we've got china falling off walls from trucks going down Mulberry Street. This wasn't created because we had nothing else to do. It was brought up because it's a problem for the people who live on Mulberry Street.
I understand that and I have the same problem.
I think I can get a room full of people here arguing that point if you'd like that to happen.
I have heard no one else complaining about it. And, you know, if people have complaints about that, then I guess they need to, they need to step forward. I live on a small street, I have school buses coming down, large school buses and a bunch of them, I have kids paving, repaving the road with black rubber and, so yeah, I know what noise is and I know what dishes coming off of walls are from Main Street, so, yeah.
At this point, you want to do anything further, or?
Well, I mean, I would like to, I would like to really investigate this and, you know, perhaps, you know, maybe delay it until the road's rebuilt, I don't know. But, you know, it is a main thoroughfare.
The truck route on Mulberry was discontinued when we put in Owen Street and CP Avenue. That's when it was dropped. Then somehow, it got lost in the shuffle and it came back on. It was terminated by the council because they didn't want Mulberry to be the truck route, so, whatever, you know.
I'd just like to add... There are a couple of questions we might want to investigate while we're doing the conversation is, is that, that was a debate internally, do we design Mulberry to be a truck route now or not? Because if we're going back to designing it, if it's going back to being a truck route, then we would design it to different standards than we would if it wasn't.
Well, I guess, I guess my point isn't necessarily that it should be a truck route. My point is, is that somebody that inadvertently gets on there should have the option of going through and not being penalized. And I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, but because all county highways are considered truck routes, A tends to be a problem because people, the trucks that are running, want to run it through the city. When you're looking at how you're messing with commerce and trucking is, and so it's a federal issue and there are a lot of state laws related to, or federal laws related to how you can reroute trucks, my suggestion would be that, you know, we look at it and make a determination of how it connects the truck routes, how much additional delay time they would be running Owen Street, those types of things, and then make a determination on whether we want to bring it back and redesign it as a truck route.
Yeah, that's fine, I just guess I need a little more information.
Don't we have a, I guess, a future vision out there to terminate A at a different location?
We do. We would like to swing that, but that's, you're looking at 40 years.
Yeah.
Because that was something we looked at and said, if we could reroute A and G up Mulberry, or, but that's up CP Avenue, not even Owen Street. So, yes, but that, you were involved in the debate when we were looking at being able to swing that and because they're doing the upgrades to it now and that would put another 40 years of life into it, it would be out, they do have our documentation, but I don't plan on being here when that happens.
Mrs. Fritsch, it might be worthwhile for me to look at ordinance 455 because that was the ordinance that added North CP Avenue for its entire length and Owen Street for its entire length, just to see if there was just an inadvertent error that that's how Mulberry stayed on, just to get the historical record correct. And that's happened, you know, it's not outside the realm of possibility that something got missed when ordinance was taken and put into the code, that oops, we forgot to take that out. So I'll take a look at that and I'll send you guys a memo on it.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to add my two cents.
Sure.
Live, since I live on the street, I've noticed the decline in the truck traffic. It's been welcome. You don't hear the rattle and the rumble as much as you used to or, and I think it's, for me, living there, it's been an improvement.
Anything else? All right, we'll get a memo and moving on, discussion on senior center.
I know that last time we had, you had asked, in fact, I think Carol was here and talked to us about it, looking at the options for a senior center and you asked us to do some research. We provided a memo on some of the issues that we felt were important, an idea of what it was going to cost to operate it, which would be an additional amount of annual tax revenue that wouldn't be able to come through the debt levy that we would need to be able to raise in some form or fashion. And basically, the only way we're going to get that kind of money is either the legislature removes the debt cap or we go to referendum and ask to have the debt cap raised. And so there was some discussion on, that you guys wanted to sit down and have a conversation about, you know, what the options were, what direction we felt was important to head and those types of things. So it was just a general discussion, I wanted to put on the agenda.
And Rudy, I know you were interested in, actually...
Yeah, and I guess, I guess, I would like to get a population breakdown on senior citizens versus non-senior citizens. And I don't know how we would do it if we could put out a questionnaire or whatever in the billing cycle to see who would actually use it, if seniors would actually use it. I hate putting a lot of money in and it ends up being an empty building, I don't think it would, but, and I guess, I guess I'd like other options just as far as availability of locations. I don't know if this requires a working group or...
Well, the document you handed out was pretty much all over the board. I mean, everything from a hundred thousand to half a million to run one stuff. Each one had its own individual programs that they ran based on the community and what they wanted and, yeah, we don't know those things yet, right?
No, we don't, we don't have any idea. And there are a lot of options. I mean, you know, you could tie in with Rock Lake Activity Center, upgrade the building, put in the program in place and start running it that way. The building would get a lot of use then because you'd have a lot of other things than just the senior center. We would basically be responsible for the whole building then, we'd have to figure out how we would run the programs out of there and then operating the senior center portion of it. There are other options, we can set up an individual one, we can put, we can just run an operations out of an existing church or something like that. There, I mean, there are a lot of options. And you want to say anything, Carol? Is that already?
Do we need to suspend the rules to let Carol talk?
Yes, we would have to. I just wanted to know if she's got anything.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for Carol Burrows to speak to the council.
In a second, all right. And Carol?
Thank you, yes, I have continued to do some searching for a place to use and the congregational church did come forward and offer their lower level at their building. They have an elevator on the west side of the building, which also has the parking lot. I gathered what I thought was a good representation of ages when we went to get a tour of the building and I had been there before and been through most of it, but some of the other folks that were with me had not. One of the people that has been instrumental in trying to get something going too is... One of the people that has been instrumental in trying to get something going too is Peggy Drager, who is now a case manager at Sun Prairie at the Colonial Club there, and she has lots of ideas for things because she deals with this all the time. I invited her mother and a couple of other people to go along and to see if they thought it would be a good fit. Joe and Peg Storres have been very helpful, that is part of their congregation at their church. And the snag that we have run into now was the main question that I had even for here is liability. Joe is the leadership chair or the chair of his council right now, and he did go to council at the Congregational Church, and they are too asking about whether insurance would cover people. If you are not a member of that church, are you covered? Well, it would be like if you attended a funeral there and you fell and something happened. However, if we are saying it is a center, then we need to have our own insurance coverage, and it would have to be a general liability policy because the church insurance policy, we would have to have something supplementing that, naming the church as an additional insured. I did call and just get a brief estimate about a policy that would be for a year and it would be up five hundred to, five hundred dollars to seven hundred and fifty. That's just an estimate. Just happened to run into Jane Riddell today from the rec department, who's, excuse me, stopped me and said, she had heard that we were trying to gather something for a senior center. And I said, yes, we are a community center, a senior center, whatever we can do to get people together. And she's very interested in it also, so, you know, my suggestion would be to, instead of all these individual groups working for, towards something, to get a committee together and see what we can do. In the meantime, you know, it doesn't have to be just a specific center for seniors or for a certain age group. I think an intergenerational building or gathering spot is still the best because I think it fits all the needs. However, Lake Mills does not have any empty building that I can find that accommodates that. So, I don't know. Thank you, Steve, for doing all the research with the neighboring communities. And when you see the things that they put together, it, I think it's just too bad that we're missing out on that.
Do you have, do you think that there would be some citizens who would be interested in sitting on a committee?
Absolutely. I can give you the names of them. People who have called me or asked me about it, yes. People who are very interested in getting something going.
Well, Steve, can we get an ad hoc citizens group to go into this?
Well, I'd just like to say to Mr. Chairman, I'd be interested in joining in something like this.
If the committee is in any way formed by the city council, even if it's ad hoc, the committee would then be subject to open meeting law restrictions, so they'd have to notice and, you know, what their meeting's going to be about, when it's going to be and hold it in a public building. Those don't seem to be too onerous. We live within public meeting law all the time, so I don't think that that really would be an impediment, but we don't want to lose track of that if you decide to create a committee.
Will we do that by resolution?
Yeah, you could do it by resolution.
Could a council person sit on it and not cause a problem?
Yeah.
And the resolution would designate that we have a certain amount of funds set aside for it and that we're going to, that the goal of the project is to determine if there's enough interest in a senior citizen center to justify a referendum to start one.
Well, it's either that or, you know, I think we'd get more traction if it was broader.
Community center, a youth group along with a senior, along with a...
Might not say community center.
Yeah. Carol, does that sound like we're on the right track?
It does, it does. And part of the discussion I had with Jane today was perhaps we need to survey our community residents to, like they did for the school, to see when they were doing the elementary building, what people wanted, what they expected, what was available, what was doable financially.
Yeah, and I think that's a good start because I know the report, I mean, it was everything from exercise to different programs, going out of town or shopping or whatever, but there was, there was a wide range of stuff, so it'd be nice to know how many people are going to use it and what exactly they'd like to have in the building. So, and can we have more than, if it's two or, you can't have three, two or three council members?
You could have two.
You could have two, but not three.
Right.
Well, it would be a much better council.
Okay. All right.
So, Carol, would you work with Steve?
Sure.
All right, and that's the direction we'll go. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Discussion decision on approval of sandbar lease. Get the motion sixteen six one one read, please.
City Council motion sixteen dash six dash one dash one, authorize the city manager to execute lease agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Herring Enterprises LLC. Be it moved by the City Council, the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. Section one, that the lease agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Herring Enterprises LLC, copies of which are attached hereto and made a part hereof, are hereby approved. Section two, that the city manager is authorized to execute said lease agreement and takes such actions as necessary to implement such agreement. The city does hereby approve the agreement and authorize the council president to sign the motion.
We have a motion to adopt sixteen six point one.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Questions? What we got here? I think we need to...
Mr. Herring is here in case you want to suspend your rules to speak with him.
Anyone want, would make a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second? Colville, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And, Mr. Herring, you got anything you want to share? Is it, are you good with this or are we...
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Steve and I worked together to get the improvements done that needed to be done on the building. The city building inspector approved it, I believe it was, you know, a couple of days before Memorial Day.
Like the twenty-sixth or something?
Yeah. So, I think we did a good job getting it ready and up the code, so to speak. There were some electrical problems, which was the biggest thing, some rotted wood doors, that kind of thing. Doors that opened into the building instead of out. Just some simple things.
All better now?
All better. Good to go.
Any questions? All righty. Thank you. Colville, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, and discussion decision alliance, temporary sculpture. That is, motion sixteen six one two, can we have that read, please?
City Council motion sixteen dash six dash one dash two, authorizing the use of the Ford Court walkway by the Arts Alliance of Greater Lake Mills. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills pursuant to authority conferred by Wisconsin State statutes has established certain standards and procedures for use of public property within the corporate limits of the City of Lake Mills. And whereas, a request to display art in the Ford Court walkway from June one to December two thousand and sixteen has been submitted by the Arts Alliance of Greater Lake Mills and the city manager and city staff have reviewed the proposed request. And whereas, the plan commissioner has reviewed the information submitted and has considered the information regarding the subject and recommended the council approve said request. And whereas, the city council has reviewed the information submitted and has considered the information regarding the subject. Be it therefore moved by the City of Lake Mills Council. That section one, the Arts Alliance of Greater Lake Mills is authorized to use the Ford Court walkway as set forth in the attached request. Section two, the city manager is authorized to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said Ford Court walkway use. Section three, the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion to Arts Alliance of Greater Lake Mills, PO Box three five two, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, five three five five one. The city council is hereby approve the use of Ford Court walkway and authorize the council president to sign the motion.
All right, we have a motion to adopt sixteen six one two. So moved. Second?
Second.
Discussion, do we have someone who wanted to explain it? We have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right, Colville, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. And Lady of the Lake.
So, um, Leslie Mute, Steve Fauer of the Arts Alliance. So, um, it's an aluminum sculpture. Did you get the handout that I sent?
It's in our computers.
Oh, great. So, it's pretty much that except that the artist would, the artist would do the installation on Sunday, June nineteenth, and we've been talking to Mr. Hermanson and Mr. Wilkie to use the parking lot for that one day of installation. Then she would, she would do a aluminum pour to make the base squares on the hem of the skirt of the lady of the lake, and then she would construct it on Sunday and then Monday and probably be done on Tuesday, the twenty-first. It fits perfectly in there. The base would be the...
Paul Hermanson has, has extenders for manholes and they're four feet in diameter exterior, three feet interior, and then the sculpture itself would sit on top of that. She would then secure that to that concrete base and there would be no way anybody could monkey around with and move it.
Okay.
And then she would remove it in late September and we would have an option, the Arts Alliance would have an option if the city really liked it and people, the community really liked the sculpture and the city council was willing to accept it as a gift, that we could purchase it and have it permanently someplace, which would be another choice.
So it would be up by what day?
Well, we'd start, she'd start the installation on June nineteenth, but she, we had the community thus far make some sand blocks that they carved images of lakes and water and things, and so that would be a demonstration that she would do for the community. I would invite all of you and the community and our senator and representative, as many people as we think would be there, because in addition to being funded by the Arts Alliance of Greater Lake Mills, it's also being funded by Wisconsin Arts Board Creative Communities Grant. So then start that installation, most likely be done by Tuesday, June twenty-first, and then be up for the summer.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Thank you very much for coming out. Colville, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right. Congratulations, I look forward to seeing it. Damn Construction Services, motion sixteen six one three, can we have that read, please?
City Council motion sixteen dash six dash one dash three, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for all construction services related to Lake Mills Dam rehabilitation. Whereas the City Council of Lake Mills pursuant to the authority conferred by Wisconsin State statutes has established certain standards and procedures for the maintenance of public infrastructure within the corporate limits of the City of Lake Mills. And whereas, the City Council of Lake Mills is responsible for the maintenance of the physical elements of the city and clean repairs that in the city council's judgment bear relation to the health and welfare of the city. And whereas, the city manager has received a proposed agreement from Mead and Hunt, Inc. for construction services that provides all professional engineering associated with the construction rehabilitation of Lake Mills Dam and spillway and has forwarded that agreement to the city council for its review and recommendation regarding said agreement. Now therefore be moved that, that the city council of the City of Lake Mills hereby approves the construction services agreement for professional engineering associated with the construction rehabilitation of Lake Mills Dam and spillway from Mead and Hunt, Inc., a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part hereof, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
We have motion to adopt sixteen six one three.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right, now I know this is, we've talked about this quite a bit, is there any other questions or anything on the contract?
Yeah, this is just the extra that was required for oversight.
Yes. Yeah, we, we always had to have some oversight on the project that would have come at this point in time. We had a little bit of extra on the dam design because we rejected the first ones and went to the second one, so that was a ten thousand dollar add on the design. At that point in time, I said there would be some more coming as part of the construction services. This is that portion. Because of the way the, I asked the engineer to spend a lot more time on site than we would have normally, just because we want to make sure that everything goes well with the construction and that tight quarters and we have a, kind of a newbie dam builder.
Yeah.
So I, it's probably a little bit high, well, I know it's higher than what we normally would have seen, but I think that the low bid that we got from the contractor makes up for it, so it's not any more than what we were anticipating.
All right, and he'll be on site a lot during the beginning...
That's why this is that high is because there's going to be an engineer there to say, oh, maybe you want to wait a minute before you do that.
Okay, everything, so, all right. Any further questions or discussion? Colville, please.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Here we go, motion sixteen six one four, purchase of our new super truck. Can we get that read, please?
City Council motion sixteen dash six dash one dash four, authorizing the city manager to execute documents for the purchase of a super duty three-quarter ton truck for the street department. Be it moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. Section one, that the street department prepared information regarding the need for a three-quarter ton pickup truck. And section two, that treasurer finance director has reviewed the request and prepared a memo detailing funding options. And section three, that the truck is used, is a used vehicle and subject to three quotes for purchase, which has been completed by the public works director. And section four, that the city manager has reviewed the request and has determined that there is a need for the truck. And section five, that the city councils review the truck purchase information, copies of which have been distributed to the city council. And section six, that the agreement for the purchase of a two thousand and eight Ford F two fifty XL SD from Fifty-Six Auto Sales, seven eighty-one State Route fifty-six, London, Ohio, at a price of fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars is hereby approved. Section seven, that the city manager is authorized to execute all agreements and takes such actions as necessary to execute said purchase. The city council is hereby approve the purchase of a two thousand and eight Ford F two fifty XL SD from Fifty-Six Auto Sales, seven eighty-one State Route fifty-six, London, Ohio, at a price of fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and authorize the council president to sign the motion.
All right, we have a motion to adopt sixteen six one four. Can I do it? I'll make the motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right. Um, Steve, you want to talk about the truck or, this comes with everything, right?
Well, what I noted is that the existing truck is, is pretty much rusted in half, so that the frame is, so that it's kind of like this and, and it's, it's a mechanic's truck, so he's running around fixing all the other equipment and so he has all his stuff loaded in it so he can move from site to site. Normally, he gets trucks that are dropped down, but at this point, there haven't been any and they're, it got to be a critical situation, so the public works director asked if he could take bids. He, he really went out and covered a lot of territory to find bids and...
Well, and this comes with all the box, utility box is already on it, it's already outfitted as a utility truck, correct?
I believe it does.
The picture I was looking at did.
That was one of the reasons that, that the mechanic wanted it. My question was, is that it, it wasn't budgeted. He has been working with the treasurer to try and determine how it would be financed and it is a very good price for the truck as it's outfitted, so...
Liz, do you want to?
Can I just add something? You know, and I think that the mechanic should probably have a new truck. However, that truck didn't rust out in the last six months. That truck was rusted out before the budget. That truck was rusted out before the budget. And Paul has had, has had a record now of asking for purchases outside the budget cycle. This is a capital budget, this is a capital purchase. So is the next item. You know, we, we had eighty, eighty-some thousand for the roof repair that was unfunded, unbudgeted. And I know what the reason is, don't get me wrong, and I can understand that, but these kind of things, the snowplow, you know, these things didn't happen in the last six months.
The, the snowplow's a little bit different, and, and I would like to discuss that one as it comes up, but what happened with the snowplow is, is we can't get it until actually the fiscal year, and they didn't notice us until just very recently. And the package that they offer is a, is a great deal. So, but they, they want to have some type of financing in place to make their arrangements work, so it's a difference between two governmental entities, and we're trying to work that out. This one's a little bit different. I give you, he was trying to stretch that truck as long as he could. He was hoping that within the next time period, he would find something he could transfer over. I mean, we've been shuffling trucks between electric and parks, and it, it just, it just gave up the go. So, while it, you're right, he didn't budget it, and it probably should have been budgeted, he was picking his priorities, and, and he got his fingers burned on this one. The next one is, is a totally different situation. I'd be, because we were looking at picking up a truck, and it was two hundred thousand dollars, we're getting it for eighty, we just have to manipulate through the county's financing system.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that, and again, you know, Paul's going to have to realize that we do have a budget process, and, and that money, although I, I granted it, it's, it's something that, at this point, needs to be done, but, you know, he definitely needs to be spanked on this one. This is, you know, he, he needs to, he needs to get this stuff in the budget at the proper time. I guess I'll get off my soapbox.
All right. And Liz, do you want to talk about the financing? What do you want to do here? There's a couple choices or options.
Right, right. As far as the budget goes, you know, this thirteen to seventeen thousand dollars, you know, it's, it's manageable if we were trying to pull it out within the budget that he currently has. It's too early in the year to say that he's going to have any money funds in his general budget to, to cover this expense. So that's why I recommended that we use fund balance. Right now, the fund balance at the end of two thousand fifteen was a little bit higher than what your policy says by only about two percent. So that's still, you know, we're talking maybe a hundred and eighty thousand over your, your maximum on the policy. I think that the fund balance would be a better option. I don't think we want to go out and get borrowing for this small amount, because why have that additional interest expense if we don't need to?
And at the end of the year, you can make a decision on how we want to continue paying that out. If it, if it comes out of his budget, then the fund balance gets replenished.
Exactly, exactly.
Or otherwise, it comes out of the fund balance.
Well, I think it should come out of his budget before he has Christmas in July.
And did you, Mike, did you ever?
Yeah, you know, stuff like this where it's unbudgeted, stuff like that happens, but I, I'm right on the same lines with Ruby, there should have been seen, so what it makes me think is, do we need to send somebody down there with the rest of their stuff? That's the first thing it does to me, is sends bells off saying that maybe there's stuff hidden down there that nobody knows about, and all of a sudden, it's going to hit us again.
Once we go through the next budget cycle, make sure we know it's, what inventory do you have, what's tranny's about to go, and frame, and?
It opens itself up for scrutiny.
If you want to have a list of all the items that they would wish for at every budget, you would?
I don't know that wish for as much as what's on its last legs.
Well, that?
Tell me which ones you're trying to squeeze for another?
Right, but there, when you're, when you're evaluating a mechanic's truck versus some other piece of equipment, or what you're trying to squeeze in in fiscal year, and what the debt are, sometimes you're saying, maybe that truck could make it one more year. So, well, you know, we're down there, we're debating all this, we're trying to keep ourselves within a certain fund level and a certain amount of debt, and we're trying to spread it out evenly across all the departments. Sometimes a department has to suck it up and, and run a truck a little bit longer, you got burnt. But I, I don't, you know, if you want to go down there and replace every bad piece of equipment he's got, he's going to start saying, well, you should replace this wheel loader, you should replace this, this bucket truck, you should replace this backhoe, you should replace this bulldozer.
Yeah, I don't think we should think about it that far, but what I, I'm trying to get across is that it, it makes you look like you're not doing your job down there. It makes you look like you're hiding stuff, whether you are or not, which we know, we know he's not. But it does give that impression when you start seeing these things, because we know that the, the fire department budgets, budgets for a replacement every few years, the police force budgets, budgets for new cars every year.
We, and we, we have a lot of equipment that's budgeted for replacement in the public works one, and they replaced this year, and they replaced the year before. They, you know, when we go down there and I walk you through there, you know, we, we bought, the second year I was here, we bought two used, we had budgeted one new, and we bought two used from Janesville. They were ninety fours. They're still not the oldest trucks in our snowplow fleet. So when you're looking at some of the other types of equipment, you're trying to squeeze out as much life as you can, because, you know, you can't borrow money all the time.
Yeah, well, we, we just want to make sure that we're giving them the tools they need to do their jobs, and if we don't know what they need, then it's hard to, you know, read their minds and move forward with giving them what they need. It's just harder if you come to us after it's broken and you really need it.
So, message sent to Paul, is that correct? Are we done?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, everybody understands a budget is a budget, and you don't, you don't second guess the budget. I hope everybody does understand, I'm sure that you. I'll get off my soapbox again.
We done second time?
Second time.
Uh, anything else?
No, yeah, which option are we? One?
That's on Liz, right?
City ballot.
Yeah, I think we have to add that.
I would add it.
You just say it in one?
Because there was, there's every once in a while where, six months from now, we're sitting there going, which option did they select? And there's nothing written, option one.
Are they going to live with this truck?
Well, the actual?
No, we're actually going to run it. Option one.
We got a motion to adopt option one? You going to do that?
Sorry, I just have one more question, Danny.
Oh.
If we're running to go get it, they're using city time, city money, so they're covered with insurance and everything covered?
We, we do that on a regular basis, you know, like the LEFAC. We have to take that to Virginia every time we need a fix. And so, we run it there and run it back.
Yeah, I just hate to see that on somebody else's.
No, we, we cover ourselves.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so then we have a motion to amend sixteen six one four for option one. Do we have a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch.
I have a question. This is a motion to what?
A, amend for option one.
Okay. So, it's a motion to amend, but not the motion?
Right.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Schar.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, and then, do I need a motion to adopt the amended sixteen six one four?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Schar.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Nay.
Okay.
Motion passed four one.
And then, here goes a good one, um, motion sixteen six one five, can we have? That read, please?
City Council motion sixteen dash six dash one dash five, authorizing city manager to execute documents for the purchase of a patrol truck for the street department. Be it moved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. Section one, that the street department prepared information regarding the need for patrol truck. And section two, that the treasurer finance directors reviewed the request and prepared a memo detailing funding options. And section three, that the truck is a used vehicle being purchased from another government, governmental entity, which meets the city's purchasing requirements. And section four, that the city managers reviewed the request and determined there is a need for the truck. Section five, city council has reviewed the truck purchase information, copies of which have been distributed to the city council. Section six, that an agreement for the purchase of a two thousand ten International seventy-four hundred, single axle dump truck with a Monroe plow blade wing and Monroe pre-wet salt spreader at a price of eighty thousand are hereby approved. Section seven, that the city managers authorized to execute all agreements and take such actions as necessary to execute said purchase. The city council has hereby approved the purchase of a two thousand ten International seventy-four hundred, single axle dump truck with Monroe plow blade wing and Monroe pre-wet salt spreader at a price of eighty thousand dollars from Jefferson County, Wisconsin, and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
Motion to adopt sixteen six one five. So moved. A second?
Second.
All right, now.
Just the one that's sitting on one oh six by D.
Highways?
Sitting?
No, this is actually still being used by the county. They don't have it sitting. It's a, it's a really nice truck. How come they want to sell it? They have theirs on a schedule like we have our police department.
Oh.
So every five years, bang, they sell them out. These trucks are, these trucks are in better shape than fifty, well, probably sixty percent of our fleet. They're, they're really decked out nice, stainless steel, top of the nut lines, snowplows and salt spreaders and brine systems. And they're at eighty thousand dollars, we couldn't, you know, we'd be in the two hundred thousand dollar category to pick up one of these trucks new, which we were planning to do next year, so we're basically saving about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars by financing it this year rather than next year, but it's so close to the end of the year that we can just kind of do a resolution and flip it into the next budget.
And then, is there, is there like a time limit? I mean, obviously, other cities and towns are looking at these things.
We sent in a, a prenotice that we were interested, and that we would start the process now, so, but yes, I'm sure that they'll, they'll start selling the trucks pretty quickly based on that fact, but I don't know if they've sold all of them or not. I just know that, that we exercised our interest in, in the one we were interested in.
And then, Liz, financing?
Yes, eighty thousand is considerably more than the vehicle we were just talking about.
Correct.
What the county is asking for is two thousand dollars down payment, and we will be able to take that out of the general budget for the streets. That's not going to be as much of a problem. The remainder seventy-eight thousand, I'm recommending that we use fund balance for that, for this year, so that we can make that payment. And when we go out to borrow for next year, because we have projects we need to borrow for, for next year, we'll include this truck in that borrowing and replenish the, the fund balance. So we will, we will use it in anticipation of refunding it.
We'll have to pass a resolution like we do in all the other situations that says that, where this is an anticipation borrowing. But it's basically just kind of locking the snowplow up, because we actually don't get it until January.
Right.
We wouldn't take, so we put two thousand down.
Right.
The balance at the end of the year.
Finance the last part in December.
Because we don't take possession till January.
Till January, and then we actually, in the next fiscal year, we, when we, we'll bond for it, and we'll reimburse the general fund. But in December, we have to pass a resolution that, similar to what we do now, when we buy something in the beginning of the year, when we know we're going to finance it somewhere in the middle of the year, you have to do the same thing. You have to pass a resolution that says that we anticipate that we will use bond funds to finance this.
Right.
Would we need to amend this to have option one on this as well, or?
Yes.
Yes, we have.
Can I?
Option sure?
What, I assume Jefferson County is still using the truck?
Yes.
What happens if it becomes damaged?
We get our money back, or some percentage of it if we decide to keep it anyways, but they, they maintain those and they, they keep them, they have, I don't know if you've been in the shop, they have all their own mechanics, they do all their own work, they do, they keep them trucks in really nice shape, so. And they have a big truck wash, so they wash them, clean them, whistle, keep all the salt out of them. They're all stainless.
If we buy this truck, will we retire one of our old ones, or will we keep all of them?
I can't say right now, Diane, I didn't ask that question. Historically, we've retired, and then what we do is in the next option, we, we try and sell the truck. But it may not be the tru, it may not be, sometimes we move trucks down into a separate category, because we have ones where if a truck breaks down during snowplowing, then you have that one that used to come back in, and it may drop into that status, and that one, then that one down at the bottom will go out, but I'm pretty sure a truck will move out, because we only have so much room.
So we were looking at a truck in, what, two years, three years?
Next year.
Next year?
Two hundred thousand dollars.
So that will come out, right?
That will come out.
You will not need to do that.
Right. So the twelve thousand and the eighty thousand dollars is still a better deal than what we would have gone through next year for one truck. And, and like I noted, this, if you look at the email that came from the county, we got this on April twelfth of this year, so we couldn't have budgeted for it. But it's such a good deal, and in comparison to what we would have done anyways, it's good. I thought it was to our advantage to take advantage of it.
Yeah, this is a lot different.
Than the last one?
It's kind of a little different, yeah.
We have a motion to amend sixteen six one five to include option one?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Call the vote on that, please.
Mr. Kerkovic.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Schar.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And then, a motion to adopt sixteen six one five is amended?
I think we already hit the motion, though.
We have one to amend it?
All the original.
Do we need it?
We would, the original motion, and second was for the motion before it was amended, then we just had a motion to amend it to include the option one for financing, so I believe that we need a, a motion and a second.
To adopt?
To adopt the motion as amended.
Correct. Do we have that? So moved for second. Come on, read Robert's rules at night. Do we have the vote, please?
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Schar.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Discussion decision, task order sixteen oh four, rate increase. Sixteen six one six, can we read that, please?
City Council motion sixteen dash six dash one dash six, authorizing city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Strand Associates, Inc., for assistance with the water rate application to the Public Service Commission. Whereas the city council of the city of Lake Mills pursuant to the authority conferred by Wisconsin state statutes has established certain standards and procedures for the maintenance of utilities within the service area of the city of Lake Mills. And whereas the city council of the city of Lake Mills is responsible for the planning for the fiscal management of the utilities, including the charges related to water use, of the utilities, including the charges related to water use, and in the city council's judgment, bear relation to the fiscal management of the utilities, and whereas the city manager has requested a proposal for assistance with the water rate application to the Public Service Commission from Strand Associates, Inc., engineering consultant, and has forwarded that proposal to the city council for its review regarding said proposal. Be it therefore moved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the agreement for the water rate application assistance from Strand Associates, Inc., engineering consultant, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part hereof, is hereby approved. Section two, the city manager is authorized to execute said agreement and take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said agreement. Section three, the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion along with signed agreement to Strand Associates, Inc. The city does hereby approve the agreement and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
We have a motion to adopt sixteen six one six.
Which one? Sixteen- Zero four, ready.
The actual motion is sixteen there six dash one there six.
Okay.
That's okay, I think that's the task one. A second?
Second.
And, this is, Steve, I mean, we're just, we, we already went through the process of accepting all this, now we're kind of implementing, is that what this is?
No, uh, last year we did the L R's report, and it broke, uh, the water rate increase from one twenty-four to three eighths, with the hope that maybe as we got into the process further, we wouldn't need as ma, as much. Uh, this is the second year's review, and you can see all the information that they have to go through and provide, it's listed in the T O. Um, they have to go through and reanalyze all that information, put it into a spreadsheet, break it down, and, and then, uh, work with the Public Service Commission to, uh, try and develop a rate that's consistent with what we had proposed last year.
Okay. Any further questions? Call the board, please.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
This one is, task order sixteen oh five sewer user charge, is that one? Is that one somewhere? Motion sixteen there six dash one dash seven, can we get that read, please?
City Council motion sixteen dash six dash one dash seven, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Strand Associates, Inc., for an update of sewer user charge system, whereas the city council of the city of Lake Mills pursuant to the authority conferred by Wisconsin state statutes, has established certain standard, standards and procedures for the maintenance of utilities within the service area of the city of Lake Mills, and whereas the city council of the city of Lake Mills is responsible for the planning for the fiscal management of the utilities, including the charges related to sewer use, in the city council's judgment, bear relation to fiscal management of the utilities, and whereas, the city manager has requested a proposal for updating the sewer user charge system from Strand Associates, Inc., engineering consultant, and has ordered that proposal to the city council for its review regarding said proposal, be it therefore moved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the agreement for the updating of the sewer user charge system from Strand Associates, Inc., engineering consultant, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part hereof, is hereby approved. Section two, that the city manager is authorized to execute said agreement and take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said agreement. Section three, that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion along with signed agreement to Strand Associates, Inc. The city does hereby approve the agreement and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
And a motion to adopt sixteen six one seven?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And, pretty much like the last one, any other?
It's similar to the last one, the issue here is, is that, uh, Public Service Commission doesn't review sewer user charges, that's why it's, it's rated differently, they basically go through all the same analysis, uh, do the same, uh, basic information updates, but the council's the only one that's responsible for this one in the long run, the Public Service Commission isn't the one that approves it. Um, this is probably gonna be significantly less than the other rate adjustment, and is probably more in line, uh, we haven't done it in several years, so it's probably gonna be about one percent per year, building up to the fact that in eighteen, in eighteen, we're gonna borrow somewhere around one and a half to two million dollars for sewer improvements.
Any further questions further? Call the board, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Ordinance eleven sixty-five, future land use, second reading, do we need to speed any of these up, or do we just?
No, in fact, we have to wait this one out.
Okay.
There were some legal descriptions in the, we have to clean those up.
Okay, so that will pass to the third reading, uh, ordinance eleven sixty-six, same thing?
Actually, ordinance eleven sixty-five, um, could've been approved, but it doesn't need to rush. Um, eleven sixty-six is the one where we have a, um, some legal description issues we're trying to clean up.
Okay, so that's gonna have to pass to the third reading?
Yep.
And, uh, ordinance eleven sixty-seven, parks board membership, first reading, can we have that read, please?
Ordinance eleven sixty-seven, amending parks board membership, the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does it as follows. Section one, section two dash five dash one, establishment, membership and organization of the parks board in the Lake Mills municipal code, is amended by adding language as shown in bold type and deleting language as shown with strike through. Two dash five dash one, establishment, membership and organization. A, establishment, a parks board is hereby established. B, membership, number one, the parks board shall consist of seven members who shall be residents of the city of Lake Mills. Two, six of seven members shall be appointed by the council president to staggered three year terms commencing on May one in the year of appointment, and such appointments shall be subject to confirmation by a city council. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contributing to provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, this ordinance was sponsored by council representative Mike Foster. Section four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after passage and publication as provided by law.
All right, Mike?
So, the reason I brought this up, first I asked, what, what regulates this, and I found out it's basically us, as a council, we, we can decide what the makeup of the parks board is, and over the past few years, um, I've seen, I've seen folks trying to get on the parks board, and they put down other positions, just so they can get on some type of a commission, but they'd rather be on the, the parks board, so there seems to be a lot of interest in the parks board, and with the, the parks growing, it seems like, I don't wanna say it's, it seems like it's always the same people on the parks board, and with the issues that we have been having and are still having concerning vending and things like that, and problems at the cemetery, things like that, um, I thought, let's see if we can get some more people on there, some people that actually wanna be down there, um, that have a chance. So that's the only reason I brought it up, no other, no other agendas, I just thought that, uh, there's a lot of interest in it, and it's a lot bigger job now than it has been in the past with all the additional parks that have been.
So the, the folks you're talking about that had, I mean, a lot of them put down two or three different things that they're interested in.
Yeah.
If they're already on one, would they also wanna do two? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that, but they, they may drop off one to try to get on the other, or we may just get more interest in the parks board, and maybe when their tour is done with whatever they're on, they'll try to get back on to go into one of the parks board already. So they're, do they believe their expertise would be, would be better?
And there are two members that are up next year, and I, I don't wanna speak, but I think it's reasonable to think one of them might be done.
Yeah.
And there will be some seats open, I think.
And that's, that's the only reason I brought it up, so, um, I, I just, I know we have to have a high number of license, and not to, not to say it's for something else like that, so, this is open for whatever discussion everybody has, I just wanted to throw it out there and see if it sticks.
Well, my concern is, on the public courts board, we have trouble getting seven.
Yeah.
So we moved back to five.
It was the same, it was the same with the parks board, we, we had seven and we moved to five, 'cause we constantly had quorum problems.
Well, this year we actually had one meeting that we canceled because the quorum was five. I mean, I think Vicki and I showed up, you know, with current troubles, other issues, or?
Yeah, the way it goes, I'm fine with whatever the majority decides, I just thought we'd put it out there and discuss it, see if it warrants some discussion, and, and if we don't think it does, then no harm, no harm, we should look at it.
I would be interested in knowing what the park board thinks about it, are they interested in having two more members, or do they see it as a possible negative? I, I don't know.
Well, now, this is up, we meet next week, I'll see if I can get it on our agenda.
Yeah, and it's three readings for this, so there would be enough to get feedback.
Like I said, I didn't wanna speak for anybody, but I, I do think at least one or two, maybe.
Can we get that on the agenda for the park board?
That's what I'll look at, see if we can add it to our agenda next week.
So that they can tell us what they think.
Yeah, so, I can do that.
The only drawback that I see, and I think it's a good idea to have more members, however, if, if, uh, it comes to where you can't, your quorum is larger now, so, are, you know, is that gonna end up missing more meetings because you can't get a quorum?
Yeah, and that is a, that's something to look at.
Well, and that was, that was history, right? We had seven, and there was always an issue with quorum.
Both parks board and public courts board need to meet regularly, and we had, with seven, we had too much difficulty getting, so we turned to five, and we really reduced that problem.
So in three years, we've had one, and it was this year, where we didn't make a meeting 'cause of quorum. So, I, I'll bring it up, I'll get it added to our agenda, too.
I think that overall, if we have members on boards that are not coming to the board meetings, I think that's a good reason for the council president to replace that person, because-
If you don't show up for half a week.
You've gotta go to a meeting if you're gonna be on a board, unless you're ill, out of town on business, family emergency, those are things we, you know, but just because you don't feel like coming, then get off the board and let somebody else have that seat.
All right, anything else from Mike? All right, move on, uh, go to the second reading, recommendations for future agendas, anything there?
I guess, um, do we need to continue to have something on the, I'll call it the community committee or not, or should we let it go in advance for a while, or what?
On the senior senate?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think we'll have a resolution on it at the next meeting.
And put together, do, all right, so that will be a future agenda for next meeting?
I don't know that we'll have the committee members, but we'll lay out the organization and their, and their charge, and then from there, you'll have to find members.
Okay, anything else?
Now, if you have, if your folks haven't noticed, your beautiful faces are on the webpage, thank you, thank you.
Oh, I hadn't noticed, I gotta go look now, 'cause I take horrible pictures, and so-
They're all great.
We'll see, all right, anything else?
We have the cemetery on for the next meeting? Some preliminary discussion.
Well, let's hold on that.
Do we hold?
Yeah.
Okay. So no, for the next one?
No, we, we, we're not ready to go to council.
All right, nothing else? We're adjourned.
Future hold.